It's some of the clock. Turn it to that.
Pay attention.
It's so cold out there, right?
We don't want those. Which we're already talking about.
The 2019 meeting dates.
Thank you.
It's not that, it's not a, not fun.
I'll call the work section to order. The 2019 meeting dates last Tuesday each month does not conflict with holidays with the exception of December.
Unless you want to meet on Christmas Eve.
The meeting day could be December 17th or December 24th.
Life's got me.
Seventeen sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds good, better than twenty.
We need to discuss that at our.
You could. Are there items or something to advertise for public meetings?
And then we also, we're still looking for someone to replace Ted Price from Auburn, Springfield, Dimick, or Lathrop. Anybody has any names, give them to Bob.
And is it for a certain period of time?
Four years. Yeah. Ted now, it would be, Ted resigned halfway through, I think it was, his, um, his, um, term. So whoever would be appointed next year would only be appointed for, I think it's, it's either one or two years.
The remaining of his term.
For the remainder of his term.
I thought it was a four-year term though. Was it four?
It's a four-year term. That's what, it's been four years already? So, yeah, it's not for a full year. Well, you're having fun.
Yeah, so if he resigns midway, that would just be for the remaining of his term.
It would be for the remaining of his term.
And how many times do you meet in a month?
Once.
Once a month?
Or was it last Tuesday?
Do you get any kind of training?
Well, we used to go to conferences. It's up to the county commissioners whether they want to pay for it or not.
But no training here in the county?
No. We, there is training available. Carson Hellrich, our consultant, um, he, their DCED, the Department of Community and Economic Development, offers like, um, training for planning commissions for members. And it's a, it's an intense program. I, I mean, I've gone to it and it's like, two weeks in a row, three nights a week, that type of thing. You've, you've done that.
Yeah. And online, you can get the handbook.
Yeah.
They have handbooks. They have for planning commission members, they have for supervisors, for tax collectors, auditors.
You know, it's anyone.
Yeah. They have, the state has handbooks for everything.
And does everybody have to sign in?
Please do, yeah.
Are there any materials available to respect regarding the application for NG Advantage?
Um, there, there, I mean, we have the, the application, everything, you're asked for that. This afternoon, I, I made a copy for you, in fact, I'll give it to you now.
Yeah, could I see it? Thank you.
As far as, I talked to the chief clerk and he said if you want like, the full file, you'd have to do your right to know request, but it's, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
That's from your, we have.
Yeah, I had, you know.
But you can look at it too if you want.
Sure.
There's no other material you need for?
Now, there's plenty of materials, but you'd have to do a right to know request.
Yeah, you could take a copy of each of these things. Take a copy, one copy of each.
No.
Sign in.
Do you want to take a shot of that?
Yeah, yeah, take a shot.
Really? Yeah.
Hi there.
I'm going to read some from this.
What's that one?
I'm all ready. Mock and loaded, buddy. We can't find any way to get it. Mock and loaded.
So number one is NG Advantage Transfer Station Industrial Land Development and Springfield Township requesting final approval. The flag's in the corner there. See where that is?
Come on.
The flag.
Yeah.
I looked at that one too, for it's that.
Did you? Oh, I better see where that is, because I'm not. Yeah. Maybe we should introduce James King.
Yeah.
He's working with Bob in the planning and GIS, right?
Yeah, I did GIS. I started here about, it'll be four years ago this summer, when I started in the GIS department. I was training in GIS in the military and with college. So I did that and I have a degree in landscape architecture, so that leads into working on planning, but it hasn't, nothing's gone through with the commissioners yet, but I'm just here to update.
Okay.
They haven't made it official yet.
Okay.
We're hoping to do it next week.
Welcome.
Anthony Shelley. You know, did you meet Rick Franks?
No.
Okay, Rick Franks, Chris Ketersen.
Chris Ketersen. And Bob Howser.
And you met the two Johns upstairs.
Okay.
Okay.
So you've got in front of you NG Advantage, which is a natural, uh, compressed natural gas transfer station. At the July meeting, the planning commission gave preliminary approval. They have built the development. James and I went down last week and looked at it and it matches what's on the map with the exception, did we do, oh, okay, Mike's got those. On this, on the preliminary map, there were, there were.
Not where I'm reading it.
There were.
So what do you want again?
Yeah. Keep going.
One, one's bigger than.
One, one, okay.
Thank you, doesn't matter how big.
Yeah, it was. Yes. Um, there were three compressors, there, okay, there were six compressors on the, on, right here. There's four built and two, these two on the end on the left-hand side were not built yet. So Mike is presenting us with new maps showing that those, those two are for future construction. The two on the very left side. There's four built, they're run by electric. And so what we would record as part of that, this packet would be this site development map, okay? Showing this for future construction, because like we said, we want to record what's actually on the ground. So this would show what's on the ground. There's three islands where the trucks are filled.
Those are the six.
Four compressor engines. Um, and then various equipment.
Planer and that one.
Yeah, you want to see it?
How big are those engines? Do they give you specifications? How large the engines are?
How big?
Yeah, how large? The horsepower on the engines?
I don't know that.
How many filling, uh, how many trucks can be filled at the same time?
Yeah. Not one of our criteria anyway. So, like I said, James and I went down December 13th and it was, everything matched up with the exception of that stuff, which Mike Sepulow gave us a new map showing. Uh, they gave us the sound study, which shows that the noise level is in compliance with the ordinance, so there's not much else to say about it.
Well, can you give us the figures of that sound?
It was forty-nine point something. It was under fifty, that's all it needs to be.
Forty-nine point something?
Yeah, it was under fifty. That's all it needs to be.
Right, but it's good to know the figures actually, so it's not like, could be thirty, could be forty.
Yeah. Needs to be under fifty and it was, period.
It can be more with trucks coming in and out.
Actually, this is just our workshop. You can ask questions in the regular meeting, it's just a public comment.
When will you actually approve it? During the workshop or after the workshop?
Can we do our workshop?
It's just, it's our work session, nothing gets approved in the work session.
Okay.
We're just having a discussion among the members of the plan.
Thank you. Don't want to disturb you.
When can we speak?
Thank you. I'd be gratefully appreciative.
After, it looks like the work period, which is like, at seven-thirty or something.
At public, at the regular meetings at seven-thirty. And then we'll have public comment then.
Thank you.
Which means you can listen to all of this and then have comment, informed by all of this.
I know, it doesn't sound so simple. Isn't that wonderful? It's so exciting.
That that's before the decision is made.
I know, it's wonderful, yeah.
Anything else?
And then we have BKB Operating LLC, William and Amy Bush at Industrial Development Compressor Stations and Forest Lake Township requesting final approval.
Would that be enough?
I'd make it out of their sheets.
And here's the thing.
This started out like as Carrizo Marcellus and then they changed the name to BKB Operating. It's, uh, if you remember, we had back in, uh, twenty-seventeen, around the summer, there were four, uh, gas pads where they had fracked or drilled and fracked neighboring, neighboring property. One was Dan Ricky's out here on, out on seven oh six. Consequently, the pressure on Bush, Henninger, Shaskis, and what was that, Bonis, dropped. So they put a, a single-engine compressor on the, each of those well pads. Now, this is the final one on, on William and Amy Bush property in Forest Lake Township. Uh, so they, this one was the last one that they built. It's a single-engine compressor, kind of like WPX that John and I went to see years ago out in Forest Lake Township. And James and I, again, we went out on December sixth. Um, the, the compressor is in like a garage-type setting. The, the, the fan faces to the northwest, there's nobody there. The, the only property near them is to the northeast. And again, they did a sound study and it was in compliance with the ordinance and they're looking for final approval, but that's it. The single-engine compressor, just to boost the pressure.
So that's all that's there, is one building?
One building and, and the.
Yeah, the pride building, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just trying to figure out how many, how many buildings.
Just one building.
Just the one.
Yep.
It's right on the township line, isn't it? Yeah. Aren't they in Bridgewater?
It does. It's kind of out of nowhere.
Is that the one that's up close to the Forest Lake Township building?
No, no. This is, what's the closest? Fraser is the closest compressor station to this.
Right. A Fraser farm?
Yeah, yeah, it's close to Fraser.
That's the one, I just got there as you were getting done there.
Yes, yeah, that's right. That's the one where they took us inside and they said, they're working on a little laptop and they said, we move this, move that, it increases the pressure and everything works off the little laptop.
Well, do you have, actually have an address? Is it on Bush Road?
I do.
Located along Bush and Fraser Roads.
Yeah, probably can tell you.
Bush and Fraser, it looks like.
Is a Bush farm up the road, Bill Frager?
Two forty Fraser Road, two four oh Fraser Road is the address.
William and Amy Bush, Fraser Road.
Bill Bush is up late.
Farmer superintendent.
Okay, then we have Brooklyn Township Supervisors at Land Development in Brooklyn Township and they're requesting conditional preliminary approval. Is this across from your school?
No.
No?
Uh, they, it's up, um, up out of Brooklyn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they, that's what I asked, that's what James and I asked too, because it's right by the school, it's not.
Because that's where they have their township things now, right?
Right, right. The, the school is getting old and it's, let me see here.
So is it going to be?
One sixty-seven.
Equipment and offices, everything?
Yeah, yeah. Cinder pine and all that.
Oh, okay. Here at Cory.
Yeah, it's, it's up out, I think it's, you know where, you have a compressor, you go up out of Brooklyn? It's up there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, let's see, so they bought, um, two acres from, I've got the deed in there, they bought two acres and they're going to put up a sixty-by-sixty office building, eighty-by-seventy garage, and it's going to be their new municipal building. Now, they're using an easement. This, this road comes in off of a neighboring property, so we have a copy of the easement, we have a copy of the driveway permit, and we also have a copy of the, they're using a sewer easement for this septic system up here, they have an easement to use that on the neighboring property.
Do they have a wall on the property? Oh, yeah, existing one.
Right here.
Old house, old building.
Yeah, they have.
So it's one building that would be for equipment and one for their offices, do you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's the way I understand it.
That's what we were talking, maybe we would do.
It's just a township thing. And the only thing we need, yeah, and we're really not sure if they're going to approve it, is the news report form from the Brooklyn Township Supervisors. You think they'll approve it?
I don't know.
It's questionable, you know? That's all we need, because we got, I guess we got the sewer easement, we got the driveway permit, and, uh, there's also a drainage easement on the south side of the property that belongs to Don Williams for all this, John. They have a copy of that easement too.
Comanche, yeah.
Yeah, that's Rick.
Yeah. Parents? So Brooklyn Township already owns a piece here?
Yeah, they bought that, yeah.
Hmm, you think they would have put a driveway on with their own property?
You would think, yeah, but you don't know the lay of land, so.
Well, that might be a wetland.
Maybe it was existing, because there was a house.
It is existing, yes, it is existing.
As it says, uh, old, what's it say?
House foundation.
Yeah, old house foundation.
An existing garage.
So it probably was already there.
Well, you know, they bought it from Stock Williams. I think it was a LaRue, if I don't look before.
Yes, so here's, here's the direction. Get one back to the house. Big sense that it's there that they reduced it.
It's a LaRue, if that means anything, because they owned the property before. Yeah, he's done some engineering before at Gibson Township. Um, he did, um.
Wasn't he with the?
Went for GDS down in Lenox just recently.
He's out of zone now, but who was he with? There in New Milford, was he with Hunt?
Was he? No.
No, he's an independent.
He has, Kevin?
He's an independent.
Okay.
He did, oh, he worked for somebody down like, Scranton Way or something.
Likely he'd worked in around Harrisburg as well.
Oh, okay, yeah. You might be thinking of, um, Hirschman.
Oh, okay, maybe that's right.
And then he was brought out by Jay Chang.
Okay, maybe that's who I'm thinking of.
Todd, he's a professor of college.
I know Nate.
Yeah.
And the kids from softball and stuff, because he coaches him. But Todd has been here.
Right. What else you got?
Are there any agents from the planning commission up there?
Has he appointed a nominee in city yet?
Oh, no, we're going to do that during the meeting.
Great, but.
I guess there will be that other, other agents, right?
Good, next question.
Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah. Surprised a kid left, you know, missing a person that would take over.
He was gone the day after our last meeting.
I hear his health is really bad.
Yeah.
Neighbored the other day and not much worse than what we think.
So, yeah, yeah, not everybody knows. They, the commissioners last week appointed, uh, reappointed Kathy and John Ramsey and appointed Matt Curley to begin in January.
Oh, man, coming back?
Matt's coming back. We psyched him.
Yeah, he clicked to be a school guard, you know? His kids moved a ton of panic and.
But he still was on our show.
Last I knew, we were, we were in the driveway last time I was by there.
Do you have anything else?
It's the first month I wasn't here to see that the Dollar General got the final approval.
Yes, yeah.
So what, what happened there?
Well.
Just miscommunication or?
No, no, they just opened up.
They just decided to open without filing.
Sure, they all do it. It's not the first time.
No, I know. Just curious.
They are busy too.
Yeah, there's always cars there. When I mentioned it to the supervisors, they just kind of had a blank stare on their face, like, huh? I said, well, it's open and we didn't give them approval yet.
Right. And in the preliminary approval letter I sent them, I underlined, you know, final approval is required.
Okay.
Prior to opening for business.
Yeah.
They don't care.
Well, they wanted to be open by the end of October.
So we got them to hand it out.
I think they were.
But, yeah, but the thing is, like, I talked to Mike Jane Grandote, the county solicitor, about that and, and he's right. By the time you file something in court, our meeting is going to happen.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's, they do it, I mean, it's not just here. I've talked to Bradford and Wyoming County and they, they, they just do it. It's annoying.
Well, the family dollar in Childs is closing.
Yeah.
Because usually they're opening all over.
Yeah.
And I was in there today and she said Corporate doesn't want to renew the lease.
It's a place where they don't own a building.
Yeah.
So they'll buy, when they clean up the road.
Remember Mermelsteins in Childs?
Yeah.
Well, it's on that same piece of property.
Oh, is it?
Mermelsteins still open?
No, that burned.
Oh, did it?
So then, Mermelsteins sat this way, so then they built, there's a laundromat and a liquor store, and then another building was the family dollar. So where the old Mermelsteins was, is where you come in. But she told me Corporate doesn't want to renew the lease, so. Anyway, she was upset because she had moved to be in that area, the girl. Anyway. Maybe we should tour Brooklands before we get ours. We haven't, our engineer went deer hunting, so we haven't, we don't have any plans yet.
Where are you meeting?
Uh, we are meeting from, since November at the Herrick Center Baptist Dining Hall. It's where we voted.
Now, will you advertise that as your meeting location for the church?
Yes, yes. And then we'll, whenever we get moved in, it'll have to re-advertise.
You're digging your office, your temporary office trailer.
Yes, we have that, but we did not get a ramp, so we're not ADA clients. So to get the ramp, it's eighteen hundred dollars for them to bring it and set it up. Then it's fifteen hundred dollars for them to remove it and four hundred dollars a month rent for a metal ramp.
Wow. You can't just.
That's a lot of money. Well, I was, we're going to talk about it in January, you know, just, get some plywood and build one. And then we could meet there because we have tables and chairs we got from the school, so we could meet there. I actually met the state auditor there Monday.
Alone?
Yes.
We know it. We know it.
She knew she was going to do that.
We know it.
Yep. So, anyway. Yes, we had the public hearing last night.
They got it done.
No, it's continued till January.
Last month you was talking about meeting with the auditor alone, if they don't want to do it.
That was Monday. That was yesterday, then last night I had the hearing. Uh, I was under the impression we were going to continue till tonight, but our solicitor had not relayed that to the hearing officer, and so he adjourned and said we're going to meet in January. So it's going to linger on another month, so.
Did Elliot then submit new information?
Yes, he did, and he had an engineer there last night. Actually, he had someone from Shoemaker.
Oh.
With, addressing the septic in the well.
Okay.
And then he had an engineer there addressing the parking and the driveway permit. That's as far as we got, so.
That's about enough.
Yes, but I was thinking it would be done tonight.
But he needs a conditional use permit.
Additional, he needs a change of use permit.
Change of use.
Yeah, it's already a conditional use, so he needs a change of use, yeah. Yep, so.
You mean, his restaurant is a conditional use?
The only permit is in residential and agriculture.
Oh, okay.
So his restaurant was a conditional use, yes. So, anyway. We'll go into month eight, so it's going to be longer than that.
So, and from what I understand, a conditional use, once that use goes away, you have to apply for new use or something?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Do we have a contract?
Uh, we do, for Sue Jim Dolan.
Are they pretty good about getting their own new things, though?
I think so. We're satisfied with them, yeah. Yeah.
Township struck up for them.
I know they got them.
Have they anything done?
I don't know, we've been satisfied since. There's not that much building going on in our township.
Well, then nobody.
They watch us, so.
You tell us anything here, nobody's subdividing any land.
Right, not like it used to be.
I think subdivision, Tony Lott's.
Larry O'Reilly and Manzak.
Well, Up Meadows.
Charlie Snyder.
Up Meadows is what, seventy lots? Sixty?
Is it?
Up Meadows is the, you know.
Have they ever put a new road?
No, that was in the eighties.
Oh, okay.
Did Nancy Ross ever put a new road in?
No, that's not a township road. It was never taken over, no. No.
There you go. Wait a second.
Countdown, like New Year's Eve.
Happy New Year's meeting.
Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the minutes, which have been circulated. Any corrections or additions?
Second.
Motion was made by Rick and suggested by Kathy to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next is communication. No, that was in the eighties.
Oh, okay.
Did Nancy Ross ever put a new road in?
No, that's not a town road. It was never taken over, no.
There you go. Wait a second.
Countdown. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the minutes, which have been circulated. Any corrections or additions? Motion was made by Rick and signed by Kathy to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next is communications, which were circulated earlier. The ones in dark are the ones received since Bob's simple source. Any questions on the communications? Uh, next is staff reports. The county planning director.
So the county, or the comprehensive plan is official now, right?
The commissioners passed it. Now we're going to have it printed. I just talked to the printer today. She's going to do, it costs thirty dollars a book to print. Yeah, crazy. So we're going to have fifty done. It's all grant money that we're using. But she's going to print one and send it up as a proof before they go in and print the rest of them, so...
Will there be a charge to the people?
I don't think, I don't know. I, I...
To the residents?
Obviously, I don't know because it's grant money. I don't know that we can, so...
That's good.
I also had a email today from Ted Ritschek, who I had talked to last week about, or last couple of weeks about updating the saldo. And I think John made a comment last time. Might not be the proper time to do it. So, I don't know what you want to do with that. The, the grant money runs out in June, the end of June, so if we're going to do something, it would have to be done by then.
How did the county commissioners feel about it?
They, they haven't said.
They haven't said?
We're waiting for the planning commission to recommend or not recommend. I did mention it to them, but they don't have any feeling on it.
Now, when you mentioned the saldo, is that for the county?
Yeah.
So you have a saldo besides the municipalities?
No, it's county.
It's just county. But don't municipalities have saldos also? Some do?
All right, any other questions on Bob's report?
Oh, according to Mike James, Recco forever. Yeah, until, what he said was, we were trying to get rid of them. We, we scanned, you know, James and Kiana and everybody in our office scanned them. We got everything done up to date. And we were ready to throw them out. And Mike James Recco had talked to the judge and said, you have to certify, someone has to certify that every paper that was scanned was actually scanned. To verify, you know, okay, this paper, yes, it's on there. This paper, yes, it's on there. It's never going to happen. And, and he said, they went through that with the courts, with the prosecutor's office. He said, they, they finally just stored them somewhere. So ours are just next door here, you know, in the basement.
So there's a flood, or a fire, or...
And until they get too old, rats eat them like they did in the courthouse, yeah. That's what happened the last time. But they're in filing cabinets now, so...
A motion's in order on Bob's report. Motion was made by Bob and signed by John Ramsey to approve the county planning director's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next is public comment, which is items on the agenda or items which may appear on the agenda in the future. So any public comment? Vera?
Okay, want to just hand out a statement? I'd like to read a state, my statement. So I'm going to hand everybody a copy. Okay, I'd like to read a statement to our county planning board, our county commissioners, and county officials. Today, December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, citizens of Susquehanna County proclaim their dissatisfaction with further industrialization of Susquehanna County, specifically with the latest approval or pending approval by the county planning board of NG Advantage Compressed Gas CNG Terminal Plant on Phillips Road, Springville, Pennsylvania. We ask that you please consider not approving this company for the following reasons. NG Advantage will add another eighty trucks to and from their plant on our roads that are already heavily overtaxed. The roads in Susquehanna County can barely handle the current industrialized traffic, let alone the additional kind of intense truck traffic that NG Advantage is promoting. The impact of noise and increased air pollution of eighty-plus tractor-trailers per day will have on the town of Montrose, Montrose Borough, and other villages for which these trucks must pass. NG Advantage cannot guarantee the complete safety of moving this volume of highly compressed natural gas via trucks on a daily basis and along routes that are heavily populated, including downtown Montrose. We ask that you please consider promoting zoning that limits polluting and inherently dangerous industries, such as the natural gas industry with over one thousand DEP violations. We ask that you please work on county ordinances that will prohibit companies with well over three DEP violations or other regulatory agency violations and millions in fines from their violations to be in our county or stay in our county. Stated under challenges in the updated Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and eighteen, see page twenty-six, lack of zoning causes business developers uncertainty about community acceptance and future adjoining uses. Reluctance of businesses to develop due to a boom or bust perception of the natural gas industry. This points to the detriment the gas industry has had on positive growth in our county. We need other industries besides the gas industry and anything related to the gas industry. The gas industry has not brought prosperity to our county. Please refer to pages twenty and twenty-one of the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and eighteen, and that our poverty levels have not gone down despite ten years of gas drilling and development. And recently, in the Independent on page one, fifty-five percent of children in Elk Lake Schools, elementary schools, in the poverty level. This is higher than it was ten years ago. This is really unacceptable and horrible considering what we've gone through. Ten years of this industrialization which has no end in sight. Less than five percent of workers are connected to the gas industry in our county. Please do not approve this gas-related industry that further impacts our decaying roads, further places residents in jeopardy from so many more large trucks on our roads. We already had a vehicular fatality on that corner of Phillips and Route twenty-nine this past month. We need to strongly focus on maintaining the rural character and restoring the attractiveness of Susquehanna County. And I submit this, Vera Scroggins, Director of Citizens for Clean Water, and there's additional names of landowners on the next page who are also have these concerns. And with the comprehensive plan, what good is it for us when we can't continue with the rural character of our county? You have all kinds of points in that plan, one hundred and thirty-nine pages. And how is it going to help us stop the further industrialization of this toxic, dangerous, risky, polluting industry? So what good is this comprehensive plan? That's what I'd like to know. Is it just like something on a piece of paper so that everybody feels like they've covered something? How is it actually going to help us? We need to change the ordinances in this county seriously. We have reached too much of this industrialization. There's no end in sight. There's more companies coming in waiting on the tail of this company and this man who is here, who doesn't live here, he doesn't live next to the plant of two sixty-two acres. There's homes all around it. And I'd like to ask him questions, like what is...
This is public comment. It's not questions and answers.
Yeah, but can we get answers from this man who is the company, who is going to be in our community, who's going to be on our roads?
I don't think it's a public comment.
He should tell us the route. He should tell us where they're going exactly and where in Vermont, New Hampshire they're going. And what kind of gas they're transporting? Is it processed gas? Is it, is it raw gas? And what, what are they going to do about the roads that they're going to impact? Are they going to bond the roads? Are they going to pay for them? They need to answer questions. And why are they not given questions? So you know exactly what this company is doing. They were kicked out of New York. They were kicked out of Fenton, New York. The people there fought them, hundreds of them. They had lawsuits against the planning board, who wanted to approve them and did approve them and then had to rescind it. They fought with lawyers in the school districts and kept them out. And now they're here because it's an easy place to be. Nobody will fight it except for a handful of people. And the ordinances we have are from two thousand and eleven. Look at these ordinances. Two thousand and eleven, they need to be updated. They need to be updated for an industrialized county, for an extraction colony. We need to change this, or otherwise we will continue to be overrun by these people. He doesn't live here. What does he care? They just want to make money off of us. And we will continue to be impacted and hurt by them. This is totally, totally unacceptable. We need to fight this. Let's not be so passive. Thank you.
Does John come over there?
Just ask a couple of questions before I, because I tried to ask...
No, we're not asking. We're not answering questions.
Well, I just, I tried asking during the, the work session, and, and you said that I could ask questions during the public comments. So I'm just asking now, if I, just two questions. When we're...
When we discuss the plan.
When you discuss the plan, so there's going to be a...
Would you please give Bob your name for the...
William Houston. So I'm going to be able to ask questions before you vote on the facility?
Yes, yes.
Very good. I, I do have a little presentation here, some material I'm going to give you, but... So do you ever consider the, uh, do you ever consider the, let me do a selfie. Do you ever consider the character of the applicant whenever you approve or not approve a facility? Because what I want to tell you is, um, this applicant has made false statements regarding public safety of these vehicles to elected officials. And the place was the town of Rye, New York. And I have the presentation right here. I'm going to start this passing around, and maybe, you know, Bob later can make copies for all of you. You can look at it. This is the copy that I'm going to be referring to. So this is Jay Parent. He is the Director of Public Safety with NG Advantage, okay? So here's what he says. He says, "There has never been a failure of these cylinders used in these types of trailers in over eight years of industry operations." First of all, these trailers were only approved in two thousand and twelve, so they've only, and they've only been commercially available since two thousand and thirteen. So they've only been on the road for five years. So that's one problem with this statement. Uh, the next thing he says is, and I'm going to get into more details in just a minute. He says, "The safety systems prevent overpressurization in the event of rapid gain of pressure due to fire." Each one of these statements I'm going to show you is false. "The gas will vent upward and away from any source of ignition in the event of flame impingement on the trailer." And then here's the one that's most outrageous, okay? And this was also stated by Matt Smith of XNG, whom you've probably met before. He says, "The trailer cylinders do not explode," okay? So here's what I'm going to show you. So here's the reality. I'm going to show you, and then I'll show the audience in a second. The reality is, here's Indianapolis, Indiana. Uh, there's an explosion of one of the tanks. Three of the tanks exploded. It was a fuel tanks in a CNG trash truck, thirty-six hundred PSI, exactly the same, only much bigger. These, these tanks and these trailers are much bigger, but the exact same kind of tank. Buffalo, New York, tractor-trailer CNG was hit by a train, completely exploded. A driver was critically injured and a conductor for the train was critically injured. Nashville, Tennessee, May of two thousand and sixteen, this tractor completely is demolished, and there was no source of ignition. This was only from the expanding gases. Uh, the tank got damaged by road debris. And the driver didn't realize it, and he started filling it up. And it exploded, and it knocked the guy thirty feet, and he was seriously injured. So they do explode. Jay Parent says, with X, with NG Advantage, says, "They don't explode." It's not true. I'm not going to call the man a liar because I have no idea what his intent was. He says, "The trailers have never failed." Is a rollover a failure? So here we have Albany, New York, June of this year, rollover. Hartwick, New York, September of two thousand and seventeen, rollover. Forest Lake, PA, just down the road, rollover, February, just after they opened, XNG. These are all XNG, but it's the same vehicles. It's the same trailers. And Exeter, New York, July of this year, here's another rollover. So are rollovers considered a failure? And by the way, in at least three of these incidents, the trailers have leaked, which is a violation of the US, of the DOT special permit. They're not supposed to leak. He says, he's basically saying the trailers are safe. Here's a list of all. This is just XNG. This is just in the last eighteen months of XNG's operations. This is all of the motor vehicle accidents, five rollovers, spontaneous venting, lots of problems.
Drivers, drivers injured? How many drivers were injured?
Drivers have always been injured in every one of these rollover incidents. Okay, here he says, that, I'm quoting Jay Parent again. He is the Director of, of, of Safety, Public Safety at NG Advantage. He says, "The safety systems prevent overpressurization in the event of a rapid gain in pressure due to fire." Here's a problem with that. The safety systems sometimes fail. For example, January twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, Indianapolis, a CNG trash truck failed. There's a tank. This tank landed twelve hundred feet away, a quarter of a mile. So when these things do fail, these are small tanks in the trash trucks. These trucks are going to be big tanks. Twelve hundred feet, that's the potential impact radius. Heavy shrapnel. This thing probably weighs two hundred pounds, and it was jettisoned twelve hundred feet. I'm almost done. I have a couple more. So Jay Parent says, "The gas will safely vent upward. Don't worry if, in the event of, of a fire." So here's a trailer laying on its side. This is Albany in June, Albany, New York, two miles from the state capitol. Do you see these holes in the top? I'll pass this around in a minute so you can all look at it. Do you see all these holes on the top of the trailer? You know what they are? Those are the pressure relief device vent holes. So they only vent upwards as long as the trailer is standing on four wheels or however many wheels it has. These things roll over all the time, and sometimes they roll and they land on their roof. So when he says, "The gas always vents upwards," it's not true. And now let me show you what it looks like when one of these things does vent and there is a fire. This is a CNG trash truck from Chesapeake, Virginia, July of two thousand and fifteen. So these have the pressure relief devices pointed to the side, just like what I just showed you when the truck rolls over. So there was a load fire, the trash was on, or I'm sorry, it was a chassis fire. The chassis was on fire. Um, and the tanks, um, the pressure relief devices functioned normally. They functioned exactly as they should function. In other words, they started venting. Only because of the fire, the jet stream of the gas coming out caught on fire, and it destroyed a house. Flames shot fifty feet, completely destroyed a house. If one of these trucks fails like this, like rolls on its side and vents, it's going to destroy a neighborhood. If this happened in downtown Montrose, it would destroy the entire downtown. These trucks are extremely dangerous, and they're brand new. There's almost no history of these on the road. Here is a shop, Chesapeake, Virginia. This is during the venting. Do you see that flame? Fifty feet flame. This is what you're approving. I disagree with my friend Vera. I think it's going to be more like a hundred and fifty trucks per day, based on what I'm learning about the size of this facility. So you're going to get a hundred and fifty trucks. And by the way, they're going to be doing pipe-to-pipe. I just found out that they're going to be taking this gas and driving it, just like XNG is doing, up to Mannheim. They're going to be driving it to a place called, I just looked this up. It's in Rhode Island. It's right, it's just west of Providence, Rhode Island. They just built an injection station. So this is going to be a high-volume operation, just like X, uh, XNG is doing. In addition to their existing customers, like...
So when you explain that a little bit for people to understand, they're going to put gas into pipelines. They're going from the pipeline in Springville, and they're going to inject it into a pipeline in Rhode Island. That's what pipe-to-pipe is, in case people don't understand that?
So this isn't, this isn't going to end customers. Some of it is, like International Paper. I'm guessing International Paper is probably getting ten to fifteen trailers a day. I don't know. know. And there, it looks like they're going to be basically taking all of their customers in New England and they're going to be servicing out of this facility. So this is going to be a very high-volume operation. Now in terms of the explosive potential, I don't know if you've ever seen the show Mythbusters, but the very last show, Mythbusters, they took, they took 2.5 tons of ANFO and they put it into a cement truck and they blew it up. And there's a little picture of it. And scientists have a way of estimating or measuring the explosive potential. This turned out to be 7.7 gigajoules of energy, okay? Mythbusters final explosion. Here's a Moab, this is the most powerful non-nuclear bomb in the US arsenal. And it's about 46 gigajoules of energy. Their largest truck, the Quantum BP Lite, which is by the way overweight, the combo's going to be 90 to 100,000 pounds. These are not 80,000 pound vehicles, they're overweight. A fully loaded Quantum BP Lite is 520 gigajoules. That's like 11 Moabs. Once again, if one of these things failed catastrophically in downtown Montrose, it would take, it would leave a crater. So I think that's, that's my last one.
I've given you eight minutes.
I'm done. So here, I'm done. This is my presentation and maybe Bob could make copies for everybody if they want them later. So this is what I just told you. And this is another document that I made called Bomb Trucks 101. And it answers, there's 1,500 hours of research in this. And it answers lots and lots of questions about the problems with these vehicles. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else had public comment?
Well, I-
Give your name, please.
Yes, my name's Pamela Tilly. I have questions for the NG Advantage representative, but I guess if I could ask them after he does his presentation-
After, while we're looking at the plan.
Okay. But I'm, I'm having a difficult time understanding what the benefits are of the gas industry. We were supposed to be getting jobs and it was supposed to improve our quality of life. And looking at the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan, there are figures in there that, that really are disturbing. Child abuse has gone up in the county. That was on, it's Section 2, Page 9 of the Comprehensive Plan, there's a chart here. And the child abuse cases have gone up. This is in 2015, this was the last figure put in there. And our population's declining. Young people aren't staying. And if the gas industry is supposed to improve our quality of life, it seems like young people would want to stay. I do have more here, I just, but, but, you know, the facts, the facts do not reflect what is being said and what is being told to people. And if you complain about it, people will say, "Well, it's jobs, they're bringing in jobs." Where are these jobs? They have a job online you can apply for. It's 12 hours a day, seven days a week, get seven days off, it's $15 now. Is that the kind of job a young person would want? You're working on the weather. You have to lift at least 35 pounds. That's the job they're offering in Springville.
Barbara?
Wow. I, I was only thinking about the air emissions. And actually what I, in the end, was want to suggest is that you table this, certainly after listening to that. I have to read this because I don't remember everything. The air emissions-
Can you speak up? I can't hear a word you're saying.
I'm sorry. The air emissions for industrial facilities we have here is accumulating. And citizens have been asking for best technology for over a decade. Because you have compressors that, in this, what's going to be passed, I'm talking about that. Compressors release methane, which we know is the most heat trapping for the fossil fuel, of the fossil fuel gases. And locally, and locally release VOCs into the air we have to breathe. So I came here tonight because, in case you haven't heard, our state is now in the process, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Agreed.
They're now in the process of attending to addressing regulations on methane and VOCs. So since these gases have already accumulated here, now it's, now is the time for this county to use this, this news and table these permits until we can have protection we need, until we can use these regulations. And the Planning Commission has said that they can't do this and they can't do that. But when we had the incinerator issue, it did turn out that the Planning Commission can ask the DEP to, to address some of these emissions that you say you don't have the power to address. So, so these permits could, you could, you could ask the DEP to, for you to table this until you can take advantage of the VOC regulations. And you won't be able to do that if you approve it now. Oh, and I have a suggestion, that you could look into the emission-free dehydrator, which we tried to get the Williams to, they were polite to listen to us, but they didn't want to pay the money to use them. But they are cost-effective. They eliminate, they would eliminate 99.3% of the VO emissions and they can be used on compressors and on wells, wellheads. And they're, they're easily retrofitted and they are EPA-approved. And they're made by Engineering Concepts and Roger Miller is the CEO. So I'm just asking you to wait until you look into the air emissions and of course look into what you just found out about the trucks.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can give you any more information, please ask me. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to all business. A is subdivision and land development review. Number one is NG Advantage LLC, Transfer Station, Industrial Land Development, and Springville Township requesting final approval. And Bob will read the memo.
The Susquehanna County Planning Commission, at their regular meeting held on July 31st, 2018, granted preliminary approval of the NG Advantage Industrial Development Plan, conditioned on receipt of a copy of the approved sewage waiver, receipt of a copy of the new driveway permit required by the township, and receipt of the municipality report form from the Springville Township Supervisors within the commission's allowable review period. On August 22nd, 2018, we received an approved sewage wager, waiver in the form of a letter from Township Sewage Enforcement Officer and the municipality report form marked no objections. We were informed by Dwayne Wood, Springville Township Supervisor, that no additional driveway permit is required, therefore the plan was granted preliminary approval. Now the development is complete and the owners have requested final approval. Staff visited the site on December 13th and found it to be developed in accordance with the approved preliminary plan. A sound study was completed by Principal Environmental LLC, also named True Horizon, which indicates that the noise level of the development is in compliance with Section 7 of 7.4 of the ordinance for industrial land development in Springville Township.
I have a question about this because this is the first we've been hearing about the, the vehicles that are going to be serving us. And it seems that they are not as safe as we have been going to believe. Who would be, I don't think it's up to us to make a decision on the vehicles, but who would, who would, should we?
I don't know.
About it?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Would be PENDOT?
I would assume, but I don't know that. I can't give you a definite answer on that.
Okay. Could you look into it?
Yeah, and that would be fine, I can look into that. But as you said, we're in the ordinance. If, if this plan is disapproved, the Planning Commission, and I have to write a letter and Rick has to sign it, stating a section of the ordinance that it does not comply with. So if you want to tell me what we write, then-
I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not telling you that. I'm asking if there's something that we should also be alerting a different group, PENDOT or somebody, about the vehicles that will be on these roads, on state roads, local roads, et cetera, that though, that, that should be something-
I understand, Kathy, I understand that.
At the same time.
For the future.
Do we do PENDOTS job for them?
No, we just tell them that we've had this information. We give it to them.
Again, I'm going back to the ordinance. I need to know, this is the Planning Commission and that's our ordinance. You have to tell me what provision of that ordinance this plan does not meet.
I'm not telling you to disapprove the ordinance.
Well, the plan, we, we approved it in July.
Yes.
Right, to develop it.
I'm not, I'm not telling you to change that.
Right.
I'm just asking if in addition to that, we can kind of put a bug in PENDOTS, either that these vehicles are going to be on that road and that some of these, you were just given a whole packet about those vehicles.
Do I know that that's true?
There's no reason a private citizen couldn't do the same thing.
This is true.
I'm not in favor of directing Bob Templeton as our director to use his time to, to contact someone with that information. I'm not taking that, that's, that's not his job, that's not our job. There's lots of, as God just said, lots of private citizens who do the same thing. I don't think that's his job to do it, and I don't want him to do it.
Barbara?
Because you have the power to address public health, this is a public health issue. Like you did with the incinerator, you did contact DEP.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
You signed something.
No. There was, there was never a plan submitted to the-
They've never submitted a plan to you, Barbara.
Wasn't, wasn't there, well, didn't, you were notified that you do have the power to interject public health issues.
As, as so far as the ordinance goes. There was never a plan submitted to the county for the incinerator.
When you approved the plan, was it subject to the new comprehensive plan or the old one?
The comprehensive plan is on the ordinance.
I'm not asking you about the ordinance. I'm asking, when the plan was approved in July, were you still on the old comprehensive plan or the new one?
No, because, sir, it doesn't matter. The comprehensive plan is on the ordinance.
It certainly does matter because the law says that every one of your projects, I read it to you the last time I was here, the law says, every one of your projects has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. And there was nothing about gas drilling or indefinite expansion, indefinite development in the old comprehensive plan. The old comprehensive plans had quality of life, rural community, all that stuff.
And what about the safety of our towns and our roads? Is there anything in this ordinance, in this book, all these ordinances about safety of these companies, our safety? Is, can you, can you think of any ordinance that you can address, the safety of the people? Now that you've heard the possibility, they may not be as safe as you were once told.
Right, but we have to go by the ordinance.
I know, so is there an ordinance in here about safety of any of the industry, of trucks or anything?
I don't believe any traffic or anything is addressed.
No, we don't address PENDOT issues.
It's not addressed.
Well, it may not be PENDOT, it may be something else. We may have to go to the original manufacturer of these trucks and ask them how safe they are.
But we're not the ones who can do that. This is not within our purview. Our purview has to do what's in that book.
No, your purview is that book plus the comprehensive plan.
Right, so what's the point of the comprehensive plan? Is it just dressing, some pretty dressing for the county? Why do you even have it? Why even, why don't you just scrap it? So what's the point of it? It's just a little guideline and then it doesn't do anything, has no power? And you meanwhile, you asked us to give input the past year for the comprehensive plan, you updated it, and what's the good of it?
I was at the Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing and not one person from the general public was there.
Because nobody knew about it.
Nobody knew about it and you have difficulty telling us.
It was advertised in the paper, correct?
Twice.
Twice it was in the paper.
Well, you know who to contact. We have citizen groups in this county, they should be directly contacted because we don't see all of the ads.
Why should we single those people out other than the general public?
Something is important enough-
Something is important enough because we're the ones that come. We're the only ones that come. Where's the general public?
Nancy, will you add a motion?
Yes, I will.
I make a motion, we accept this plan.
Before you do that, you said we could give questions. Where's the questions? We didn't have our question period, please. Where's the que, you mentioned it.
You said that we could ask questions.
You said we could ask questions and we were not given the right to ask questions.
And you did, you just had questions.
No, we, questions of this company, questions of this man.
I will take her question, she had her hand up before.
And it's a fairly easy, it has a fairly easy answer to it. I just want to know, I don't know what decibel, I don't know how loud.
The ordinance has to be 50 decibels or less.
And what is, and what is that? Is that like a typewriter or is that?
60 to 70 decibels is a conversation you would have inside a closed automobile.
Inside of a closed, but then you're not having an argument, you're just leaving to each other?
I'm married, I have arguments all the time.
Normal conversation.
A normal conversation.
That's 50 decibels.
And that is from out on the road? Is that out on the road?
Well, the sound, the study was taken out on the road.
Out on the road.
And to the nearest house, right? To the nearest occupied dwellings.
And I, you know, can add something, there's a, there's a generator that we heard, James and I heard, and that will be removed, so the actual sound will be less than what it was when they took the decibel.
Right, but the generators are going to be running, which I visited the other day, they're very loud, I can hear from the road. I had my own decibel reader, it was at over 50.
Is your decibel reader certified and?
No, it's not, but it's still pretty close, I know.
Tell us about your decibel meter.
Okay, but it's over 50. Okay, but it's over 50, but it's loud and it's continuous.
I have another, I have some questions.
Everything is nonsense when the citizens have concerns. We have concerns.
Yes, but the plan has been approved, it's been built.
So you could put a table in and find out how dangerous the trucks are.
Not if it meets the ordinance.
And the comprehensive plan. Madam Chair?
So we have a motion by-
Madam Chair, I have two questions that you have, you promised me you had to do lately, I'd be glad to ask.
And second by John Ramsey.
You're not allowing us, this is not a full democracy. I, I protest that we are not a full democracy.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Motion is made by Chris and second by John Ramsey.
Point of order.
To approve the NG Advantage Transfer Station.
Point of order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for selling out our county, selling out our county to further industrialization of this industry.
People are going to get investigated pretty soon, so you better, you're-
Our county has been, has been sold out. We've lost our county.
You laugh, but you're going to get investigated.
You laugh, but it's not funny if you've got to live next to it. People live next to it.
We have a shell.
He doesn't live next to it.
Now, one of these-
Where does he live?
-transfer stations was consistent with the comprehensive plan that you approved in the last 10 years, not one. There you go.
All right, next is the BKV operating William and Amy Bush Industrial Development compressor station in Forest Lake Township requesting final approval.
Ready? The Susquehanna County Planning Commission-
And how many compressor stations now? Tell us how many compressor stations. 53 in this county, absolutely obscene.
Granted the role of the Carizo Marcellus LLC Industrial Development on lands of William and Amy Bush located along Bush and Fraser roads in Forest Lake Township. The development consists of a single building to house one natural gas compressor engine on the existing natural gas well pad of Bush. Following the granting of preliminary approval, Carizo Marcellus LLC's who sold their assets to BKV, BKV operating LLC. Now the development is complete, the owners are requesting final approval of the plan. The staff visited the site on December 6th and found it to be developed in accordance with the approved preliminary plan. A sound study was completed by Gerald C. Lockley, a consultant of State College BA, which indicates that the site is in compliance with the requirements of the Susquehanna County Subdivision Land Development Ordinance relative to noise. And staff recommendation is grant final approval of the BKV operating LLC Bush compressor station plan in Forest Lake Township.
This is pretty simple, it's basically in addition to something that's already there, it's just that it's in my area.
Single compressor, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
And how many compressors does this make?
By John Butler and seconded by Bob.
Admit to the public how many this is.
To grant final approval of the BKV Operating Bush compressor Station Plan in Forest Lake Township. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose, and I want it on record that we oppose this. Can you please put everything that we said on record? All the material we submitted to you, all the paperwork, all the statements must be on record for future generations to know that some of us opposed this. Not everybody was just willing to let it happen.
All right, next is New Business Subdivision Report of Finalized Conditional Approval. There are none at this time. Next is New Business Subdivision Land Development Review to Brooklyn Township Supervisors. Land Development in Brooklyn Township requesting conditional preliminary approval.
The Brooklyn Township Supervisors, T. Ovox 24, Brooklyn PA, have proposed the land development of their lands located along State Route 2024 in Brooklyn Township. The supervisors intend to develop the land with a new township building and access driveway. In reviewing the plans, the following items are called to your attention. Number one, by definition, this is the land development. Number two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Number three, site development plans were prepared by Tompkins Engineering of South Gibson, PA. Number four, the lot, the lot contains 2.00 acres and will be developed with a 60-foot by 60-foot office building and an 80-foot by 70-foot garage. The building will be used as a new municipal building. Number five, a septic system on the adjacent lot will serve the development. An existing easement for use of the se, the system is included in the deed of the Brooklyn Township Supervisors, instrument number 2016-10006. Number six, armed water will serve the development. Number seven, the driveway permit for State Route 2024 is included in the plan. The driveway is across a neighboring property and an easement for use of the driveway is included in the deed of the Brooklyn Township Supervisors, the same instrument number there. Number eight, approval of an NTBS and stormwater management plan is not required since the amount of earth disturbance is less than one acre. That's according to Jim Gardner of the Conservation District. Number nine, the owners have proposed 18 parking spaces as outlined on page LD-2 of the plan. Number 10, wall mounted lighting will be the only source of lights for the development. And number 11, the Brooklyn Township Supervisors were notified on December 6th. Their next regular meeting is scheduled for December 20th. Staff recommendation is grant preliminary approval of the Brooklyn Township Supervisors' land development plan, conditional receipt of the municipality report form from the Brooklyn Township Supervisors within the commission's allowable review period.
Are there any questions on that one? Which one is the, oh, just see. The buildings are...
They're joined, the building and garage.
Okay, so they're not separate.
So the, we asked, um, there's, you know, there's, there's gas about in Brooklyn, you know, two compressors, Connor and Luke, and I asked, um, yeah, Graham, Anthony, who came in, do you have a lot of people at your, at your meetings? No. They don't show up at township meetings.
So are they going to have a...
He's from the company.
On the separate office?
Yeah, but, yeah, the office building. We were asking, I was mainly concerned with parking.
Okay.
I was concerned with the parking.
Oh, how many parking spaces?
What is it, 18 parking spaces?
Eighteen square feet.
Isn't it interesting for these little...
Does, does the overall print government want the parking spaces...
Yes, yeah, not the over, just the office building, you know, it's, um...
Rated with a different type of...
So many spaces per, per, you know, um...
But it meets the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
There's 260 here.
Yeah, Nate pointed that out to us too, is that, you know, he's, uh, I'm not going to put my finger on it right now, but it's based on, you know, sliding scale of, you know.
Yeah, it's 200 square feet.
Right, right, pretty much, yeah. There it is, I finally found it. Offices, yeah, one per 200 square feet, yeah, of floor area for offices. I just thought that was interesting.
Well, we usually get four or five.
Right.
Your room, that's probably...
That's more.
Last night?
I make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Second.
Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Rick. To grant preliminary approval of the Brooklyn Township Supervisors' land development plan, conditioned and received the municipality report form from the Brooklyn Township Supervisors within the commission's allowable review period. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Staff approval approvals, minor subdivision additions through December 18th. Number one, Neilton Diaz, Lether Township, two lots.
We didn't do, no, review and comment.
Oops, sorry. Okay, Act 170, review and comment. James and William Kerr, two lot minor subdivision in Cooper Township, recommend adding William to the application as owner followed by final approval.
And that says William and, um, James and William Kerr, and the application only had one signature.
Okay.
And we got DEP approval on this today, or yesterday.
So we need a motion?
Right.
To concur with Act 170. Second. Motion was made by Rick, seconded by John Ramsey, to confer with staff action on Act 170, review and comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next is subdivision and land development staff actions listings through December 18th. Minor subdivision additions, number one, Neilton Diaz, Lether Township, two lots, remaining lands 66.83 acres, approved December 12th. And number two is Donald and Pearl Mary Cotts, Forest Lake Township, four lots, remaining lands 1.01, approved December 18th. Does anybody want to see any of those? Any motions in order?
I make a motion to accept staff approvals for the minor subdivisions and additions through December 18th.
Second.
Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Chris, to approve staff approvals, minor subdivision and additions, number one and two through December 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next is minor subdivision, new lots through December 18th. Number one is John, Marcia, Joseph, Sharon, and Andrew Gannon. Appalachian Township, one lot, 10.16 acres, remaining lands 103, approved December 5th. And number two is Dorothy Tedesco and Leona Gade, Ashton and Dale Burrow, two lots, no remaining lands, approved December 11th. Any questions on those?
I'll make a motion to approve, to accept the decision of the question.
Second. Motion was made by John Butler, seconded by Kathy, to confer with staff approvals on minor subdivision, new lots, one and two through December 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Major subdivision, new lots, none and no land development. Other items of discussion, we need a nominating committee. Maybe we usually have three. Three? Anybody want to volunteer?
Rick and I would like to do it.
Sure.
I'll do one. I got my last chance.
Rick, Chris, and John Butler.
Really volunteers. You know what's going on. Get your guys' phone numbers before we leave.
Okay. Lauren, you can do it right here like we like.
Are meetings, are meetings for December?
Meetings for 2019.
2019. The last Tuesday of each month does not conflict with the holidays, except for December.
Either meet Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve.
Those aren't officially holidays, though.
Oh, please.
All right, we'll eat New Year's Eve.
So December 17th.
Champagne.
So in December, we would meet December 17th.
If that would be okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll advertise that.
Other items of discussion?
Yes. We went through that, remember? Our lawyer at the time, Tom Martin.
Martin.
Yeah. In executive session, just by definition, it works really well. Yeah, it's, it's, I can't, I don't, I don't see anything. I'm trying to think, what jury we had.
The one we had, I believe...
The one we had was up in the courtroom. And what was the reason for that? It was something about the, oh, it was about public comment.
And the lawyer did explain what we could and could not say.
Right.
That's right. And it was just for the minority at that time.
Yeah.
You didn't take it back.
Yeah.
That's generally, I mean, I've been applauding organizations like this, and it's what it means, is the work of managers having the opportunity to discuss whatever issue might come, that they want to talk about.
But then you have to explain it to the public.
Right.
And you have to explain to the public that the reason that you went into executive session...
And didn't explain it in front of them.
Was an appropriate reason because a lot of things are supposed to be...
And that's why I asked the question. Soon. Because she had no desire.
If you're, if you're, if your solicitor is there and explaining the law to the people, you know, the members of the planning commission, which we had one of those also, and so that was held out of public hearing, and... Were you there? Did you join us at that one?
No. When this...
No, we don't. It had to do with, um, public comment, what could be accepted.
At the courthouse, but then he came and spoke to us at a work session also.
Yes, he did.
And I believe you were there, and that was that if it's not, if the plan meets the ordinance, you have to approve it.
Right, right.
He came, that's right, you cannot deny a plan if it meets the ordinance. He came, and I think that was the saying, solicitor.
I forget what he said it was, a word violation.
Correct.
So how can you change those ordinances? When can you change the ordinances? Who does it?
When the county commissioners decide.
So they do the changing? They have to make the law?
They have to do the approval of it.
Yes.
So can you give an suggestion and then see if they approve it?
Yeah, yeah.
So can we sit, can we figure out what new ordinances we need to save us from companies like this?
Well...
If they're dangerous, if there's a danger possibly to safety...
But that wouldn't be, the, the planning commission would adopt those ordinances, the county commissioners would.
Right, but you have, you can present an ordinance, you can compile an ordinance, you can create an ordinance.
You're also limited to what you can put in the subdivision. You know, we've talked about this before, zoning has a lot more power than the subdivision ordinance has.
So we have to do zoning. How are we going to do that? So when can we start that?
The county will not do zoning.
Commissioners don't want zoning.
They want individual municipalities to do zoning. I've heard that for how many years?
But didn't they...
The county does not want county-wide zoning. They don't want a county...
But they could have it, they could have it.
They don't want a county zoning ordinance for every single municipality. They want individual municipalities to have their own ordinance.
So then, like, you know, what happens when we had the Northern Tier Coalition and the Eastern Sussex County Partnership?
Right, but wasn't that county? That was county, no?
No, that was a group of twelve...
It was all municipalities?
A group of 12 municipalities.
And six municipalities.
So how can we push for a county?
Nobody adopted it.
I know, nobody adopted them, but we didn't have the gas industry infiltrated.
We did, we had the beginning of it.
Just the beginning of, but now it's like so deep, so heavy, we don't have it like it is now.
But those municipalities still have that zoning ordinance sitting on the shelf. They could adopt it.
I know, but you have to go through how many municipalities?
Twelve, well, 12 and six is 18.
18 of them?
That's more than half the, or no, it's not more than half the county, it's a little less than half the county.
So is that, does that cover the whole county if they do 18?
It doesn't, because, you know, we asked, we asked, we, for instance, we tried to get one going with Great Bend, Halsted.
Right.
You know, all the, the Route 11 corridor, the one corridor, nobody wanted it.
We've talked about it in Great Bend Borough for years and the council doesn't...
Well, maybe now they, maybe now they might want to, after a lot of people see what's involved, what we've been hit with.
You know, they say, they, Great Bend, or I served on the board there, they say, we're so small, we're landlocked, nothing can come in here. I said, if you want to buy a happy damn town, they can build in whatever they want, because you don't have zoning. And it's like, well, who the hell's going to do that? I said, maybe the gas company. They got the money to do it. And it's, people don't, want to look ahead.
Hey, the ESCP has the zoning ordinance, they worked on for five or six years, it was never adopted. There sits, that one sits too.
And who is that?
The ESCP was formed, the Eastern Susquehanna County Partnership.
Thompson Borough, Thompson Township.
Thompson Borough, Thompson Township, Harrock Township, Air Rat, Uniondale Borough, and Gibson Township. And as soon as we started talking about zoning, Gibson Township pulled out.
But they don't have as much activity there. Most of the activity is in the middle of the county, south of the county, in the western part of the county, New Milford, but all the way out there, there's not much activity. Maybe Gibson, Gibson there is, Harrock.
Well, the northern tier, that's where all the gas is.
Oh, there is some, okay.
We had it set up.
You know, the one thing you got to remember, Vera, we're not the bad people here.
I know you're not. I know you're doing, you're doing your job.
The individual people that signed up for this gas leasing.
Sold their property.
They sold their property. This is where it started. It didn't start with the planning commission.
So they sold us out.
That's right. Well, no, they sold themselves out, and because they don't think, they knew the repercussions of twenty years down the road, what it was going to be.
They didn't know, right.
And I don't mean to, I'm not questioning what you're saying.
Oh, I'm not saying that they're bad people, that's not what I'm saying by that means.
And I'm not saying you are, but not all people would agree with what you just said. Many people would not agree with what you said.
I don't... Well, again, they own the land, they signed the lease. The planning commission didn't.
Oh, no, I actually agree with you about that. But the next step was that, that somehow was a bad thing, and I don't know all, everyone was...
Oh, I'm not saying that it was a bad thing, I'm just saying it started with an individual. It didn't start with a group of people.
No question.
Or the county commissioners. That's all I'm saying.
Even during the, you know, the--
Hey, everybody does what they have to do.
People who are getting royalties are in favor of gas, people who are not getting royalties are not in favor.
But no, that's not, that's really not true. We know people, yes, we have no--
The land--
We know people who have royalties.
So I'd love to go with the back, has a summit.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we have benefited from the gas industry. I'm disappointed, I did have questions for the representative from--
Right, you don't even question this guy.
--Advantage, and he's gone. And I had to, because I did want to know how wide, how long, how tall the loads were going to be, and how many hours--
He might not even know the answers to those questions.
And the number of trucks.
We've had a lot of them, it's not their department. Like, the guy that does the plan does not know what the, what the end result is, what the vehicles are. We had them before, they don't know the answers, because that's not their expertise.
But he probably could have answered, like, if I asked him who the contact would be, if I had any questions or problems or concerns.
Well, Bob could give you a contact number.
Well, the only number I have is what I gave you on the application.
It's on the application?
Okay.
I can give you that.
But if the, yeah, go ahead.
And I do, I do know that, well, in PennDOT, if, if trucks weigh over, I think it's eighty-nine thousand pounds, um--
Well, the municipalities can bond their roads.
That's, you know, James and I were wondering about that.
Harrick Township, we have a weight limit or whatever ordinance.
And who, like, and that's why--
And so the municipalities can do that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's another question I had, it was just who would be monitoring that? That, that's all.
Well, it's up to the individual municipalities to bond their roads.
We have that question too about PennDOT roads. You know, there is a lot more traffic on PennDOT roads, and the roads show it, you know.
Right.
They're, you know, they're beat up. Where does the money come from to fix the PennDOT roads, considering the gas industry? I don't know the, you know, what's, what's the answer to that?
Illuse taxes.
Is it just gas tax?
Highway licenses and--
They do bond some roads.
They do.
PennDOT does?
Absolutely. And that requires the individual companies to bond sections of road, PennDOT, their--
PennDOT roads.
And not just PennDOT roads either, though, township roads too, right?
Correct.
Well, our milk truck got stopped on Fiddle Lake Road by the state police because of--
Feed man, too, right?
Yes, the feed truck also, yes.
Because it's overweight?
Yes.
And what's your weight limit in Harrick Township?
Those, those roads are all ten tons posted by PennDOT. That's why they're stopped.
They're state, they were state roads.
They're state roads.
Okay, but meanwhile, the gas industry is way over ten tons, and they use every ten ton road. So how does that happen?
They bond the roads they want to travel on.
Well, I called Bridgewater Township and spoke to the supervisor. He said the roads are not bonded in Bridgewater Township.
The state roads might be.
The state roads are, I have no idea about the township.
Township roads not bonded, just a, a road agreement.
You asked me about PennDOT as well, and they, I know the gas industry has, has to bond many of the roads they travel on.
Oh, yeah? Well, we'll have to find that out.
I know it's true. I don't know about the townships, whether they do or don't, that might be on an individual basis.
I think our feed company got fined like $2,000, and they're coming to our farm with feed for animals.
So--
Because they're over ten tons.
Say, for instance, NG says we're going to travel on Route 29, okay, would PennDOT make them bond that road?
It depends. They have a criteria, and they would have to go through that analysis to decide.
Do they do that before issuing some kind of permit or something?
Yeah, but it's usually, it depends on the road. A four-digit road, they definitely do.
Okay.
Sometimes a three-digit, they do, but a two-digit road like Route 29--
Right.
They don't.
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't, that's right, because I called them up. They don't. Two-digit roads, they do not bond. So there goes 29, and it was repaired about, what, two years ago?
Not long ago.
Right, about two years ago, and it's looking really bad right now. It's going to look infinitely worse.
Make a motion, may adjourn.
Whatever we can do to get county zoning, if we can somehow convince the commissioners to do it.
Good luck with that, Vera. I don't think you'll ever get a question.
For twenty yards.
Not countywide zoning.
No.
It never happens. What's that?
Oh, really?
I forgot something.
You did.
I, yes, I want to thank John for his years of service. I have it written right there, and I did look at my paper. Anyway, this is John's last meeting.
My year's term.
Thanking for his service.
I don't even know.
Then I guess it's time to go.
I think it was three terms.
We have refreshments, like, because it's Keith Richards' birthday?
Keith Richards?
Six oh seven.
Six oh seven, that's--
I'm going to give me my cell phone, because that's my--
Two three seven.
I mean, I, I--
Two three-- But I can give my phone number.
Oh, can that be?
I don't think so.
Can he be on--
Oh, I guess not.
His term ends January 1st.
So you better nominate before January 1st.
So he's, um--
Or again, you just want to do it right here.